You ready? All the regular council meeting, September 7th, 2021, City Hall to order. Is there any additions to the agenda? Citizen comments? If you're one to, yeah.
Yeah. The only thing I gotta say, I got a pretty high water bill here. This month is eleven or a thousand seventy or something like this. Jamie and Pam gave me this to show me what had happened. I still don't understand. I've been gone since maybe my toilet ran. I don't know. I'm not gonna lie so much about the bill because I talked to Marshall about this the other day. But one thing I'm wondering is when I think of automation, I worked with automation for about ten years at Anco Production Company. And when something came like this, which was unusual, it would tag it, you know, and send it out. So, you know, you would know you had a problem, which the City Hall could know that and call you here earlier. We don't have that capabilities at the time according to what Marshall said the other day. But there's our way to get this. That's a pretty good sized little bill for seven days.
So definitely if this happens again and you want to know more about that, you are more than welcome to come into my office because I can explain this.
Right.
Like we check this weekly. There is a report that will show a high water usage. I will say in the summer it's harder for us to differentiate because people use city water.
I'm not, I'm not.
Right, I'm just telling you for their, for their like water. So technically we are alerted, but we have to manually go through everything and try to decipher. Okay, is this a leak? This is what, maybe a seven day period? And then in that seven day period, you can see that it comes back down to zero.
That's what's curious.
And so, yeah, and that's a hard thing for us because all we can see is there's a leak. Something's going on. And then we call, you know, our consumers and they say, well, what's wrong? And unfortunately we can't, yeah, I mean, we just can't help it. We just, all we can see is the water usage being used. And so therefore we take a look at the map and we try to check it at least once a week. And just to keep an eye on things and make sure it's not going out of whack. But like I said, you know, you keep going back down to zero. Sometimes people leave water on, sometimes the toilet's running constantly. We just don't have the answers. And like I said, with yours going down to zero, that's more than likely why you would have not got a phone call at that point.
But you see what I'm asking, can't you? Just an automatically alarm.
Right.
You know, if you get over a certain amount of water, it just says Ron Scotts uses this much water and something's going on. You know, that's all I'm saying. I don't, because when we went with Anco, we had like ten or fifteen alarms, which we had twenty-five hundred wells.
Right.
And everything would alarm. I know that's a bit, I mean, a darn sign would do, pardon me, to, you know, do something like that. But, you know, it cost me, I think Marshall said, I don't know if this, this time or one time he had a big leak in his house. We do have the automation. It'll take a programmer to change it, I think, you know.
Yeah, that's definitely something we can look into.
Yeah, that's all I came down to ask. I'm not, you know, I'm not doubting anything. It's there.
Right.
Because you had, he ran the water meter, or somebody ran the water meter, you know, and tied it together. So I'm not saying don't pay. I've already talked to you and Pam about it and have a little work it out. So I'm just saying, if the capability's there.
I don't know if that was ever an option when you guys got.
I think it was, but I think it was a rather pricey option.
For them to monitor and it was terrible.
It can't monitor itself?
Well, there was, there was a couple of different options when we did it. And one of them was that we could take the whole system, bring it into here and monitor and program all of it. But we don't have the capability or the help to be able to do it.
Right.
And we just, and for what we paid a process, that's not on the, it's not on the list.
But just my question, guys, is, you know, I'm saying, you know, what you do, getting air sometimes, you got certain units, they alarm right now. And a lot of them don't send into your laptop or something that they are there. And that's, that's my concern. And if anybody wants to pay the bill, come on. That's it.
So you kind of figure out you had like a toilet or something running in your house that goes back to zero all the time?
I was gone most of the time. I can't figure out exactly when I was gone and when I wasn't. That's what's kind of, because I've been up there Wichita most of the year, outside. So it's not a complaint about what's happening to money. It's just a, there's a solution there. It may be too pricey, it may not be too pricey, but I wish, I wish it at least get looked into. Somebody tell you, you know, we can do something like this for a reasonable price. That's probably the only one that would care. And then another thing too, and this is one, I haven't been around your meters. But are your meters, do they, do they have towels in them or do they have? How do they register? Are they doing on a differential? How do they do?
I'm not quite sure how the small ones work, but I think they, they don't have, they don't have an impeller in them at all.
So they probably will. And so what will happen there, just, and I don't think it happened here, it could have. But, you know, our city water, it's good water, but it's still got calcium in it. If you got a differential, that calcium can get up in there and change things and then get flushed out and, you know, change. Plus you're in towels, gets in there and hang up and then break loose. So I mean, and I don't know how to solve that problem. That's a son of a gun. Because nobody wants to get those hoes and dig, dig that open in Cheddar once a year. But if, you know, I know saying the system's bad, I think it's good. It was bad this time for one of your famous citizens. Won't call you guys assholes no more if you'll be nice to it. No, I don't anyway. Not very often anyway, no. That's all I needed, guys.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen comments?
Yeah, my name's Evan Reed. I meant to do this back in July and then July turned into August and now we're into September. I just moved here from Los Angeles. I'm here serving with AmeriCorps, which is the domestic equivalent of Peace Corps. So just wanted you all to know who I am. I've gotten some very curious citizens wondering what I'm doing. Pressure washing out in the square or scraping pan off of the, the teeter totters over at Brown Park. But I'm here to serve the community over the next year and I'm just looking forward to be here.
Awesome. Thank you for that.
Anything else on the citizen comments? Consent agenda, approve the minutes, regular council meeting, August 17th, 2021. Second, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance, nine, seven, twenty, twenty-one, one hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and forty-six cents in petty cash of one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. KMEA, KMEA Midstates, six thousand, one ninety-seven, nine and thirty.
That's on the repair of that caterpillar?
Some of it's on the caterpillar, some of it's on the new stuff, some of it's on the number five engine. It kind of got spread out between them. We've had some problems with the cat trying to keep it, we're trying to keep it running until we change everything over. And it's had some PLC problems, some control, computer control problems. And it burned a thousand dollar card up. And we looked and looked and we finally got it, but it took a couple trips for some guys to get down here before we got it figured out and leveled out. We had that trouble in February when we ran. If it would have been the way it was supposed to be, you could have put it on there and went home. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't follow the bold engine. So that's where, so it took some time to figure it out, but we've got it going now. So anyway.
Got a motion in a second?
Second.
A motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor? Stanions for two thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-one cents. A motion in a second, any more discussion?
And that's for the wire?
Roll the wire, yeah, just for stock.
Well, we'll put it in here, we're here.
Okay.
We ran out, so.
All in favor? Motion carries. We will recess the regular meeting to open up the R and R hearing. Sorry, the comments on the R and R hearing, citizen comments? Whoa. You guys got any questions? We'll close the R and R hearing. There's a resolution that we need to pass for it. It is resolution number twenty, twenty-one dash oh eight.
Make a motion that passed for resolution number twenty, twenty-one dash oh eight.
Got a motion? There's just a change in. Second, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Now we'll open the budget hearing meeting. For citizen comments? Do we need to approve that? Close the budget hearing, go back into regular meeting. We have, do I have a motion to approve the twenty, twenty-two budget? A motion?
Second.
In a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Department, Jeff. First off, I got an email from KMEA that they've, I was gonna be gone that week and I was gonna put Jason in to go to KMEA meeting the end of the month. And they've turned it into a virtual because of the COVID deal. So there won't be anybody having to go to Wichita for that. Couple of things. One, my pickup's been in the shop for a month. Don't see much action out there. They tell me they can't find a rear end for it. I went to see Marshall last week to see kind of where to go here. I think I found one. I think I found a remanufactured. Somewhere in the two thousand dollar range. Until we get the numbers off of it and know exactly what it is. There are several automotive companies that, and I found this in at Rock Auto, that they have ten or twelve different types of rear ends. And whether it's for four wheel drive, two wheel drive, limited slip, all that stuff, you know. And I'm not sure how that pickup's set up. Lawrence told me he was having a hard time even finding the used, used pieces. And he said it spread, spread the, the bearing housing where the yoke sits in there. And, and I don't know yea or nay, but we're not moving anywhere. And I've been with that pickup for quite a long time and I'd really like to get it fixed. But at this point, I don't know where to turn. You know, whether it's something that we could.
He thinks the housing drove?
So he says. You know, this, this, when you, when you buy like from them, they want a core back or they're gonna charge you two hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy-five dollars for it. But even at that, I think the highest price when I saw was twenty-two or twenty-three hundred dollars.
Is that a Dana forty-four?
I think it's a sixty.
Oh, no kidding.
Not sure. That's what I thought it was, was a forty-four, but I think Lawrence said it was a sixty. But, you know, I, I don't know. It's just not much good. And, and then they cleaned all my tools out of it on top of that. I mean, you know, it hasn't, hasn't had much value sitting out there for the last thirty days. There's several, there's several different ones for choice on that. I don't know, you know.
Any idea what the difference is? One, it's gonna be twice as much.
Can't find it?
Can't find one at all.
The only thing I can find is reman. Haven't found any out of a junkyard to speak of. It's three.
And while we're on the truck, it was out there, I think we're thinking a week and a half to two weeks. It got broken to and they cleared the truck out.
They cleaned my tool there.
I talked to Trey. Um, Trey just got a, got a half list ready for me.
Yeah, you know what? I can remember that I had in there and I think it's a pretty good list, probably.
So as soon as that list is complete, we'll go to the sheriff's and file the theft report and then get with Trey. So you guys are aware that? He had dropped it off and then that day we went to Hayes to meet. He went out there that morning, I think, and noticed it, I mean, like cleaned out.
No lights, no cameras, no.
Is that like, is that like two grand worth of stuff or is that like ten grand worth of stuff?
Probably four or five.
What does it cost for the rear end to be first time used?
Thirteen fifty. I think so. Pam and I looked up, I think it's thirteen fifty.
So you've called up the Marby's and they can't get?
I have not called Marby's. I haven't called anybody. I wanted some guidance from you guys. You know, pickup being eighteen years old, parts are starting to get, and with things the way they are, it's getting more rare by the day.
I might forget the exact thing if Marby's is having trouble on drive train, you're not the first person to tell me. What's the miles on that?
About a hundred and thirty-five, I think, somewhere close.
Jasper can be an option as well.
Yeah, yeah. I bought a motor out of Powertrain, you know, they do rear ends too.
Yeah, you gotta be adjusted either at that mic, see.
I can call.
If you get a rear end, a whole rear end, can you guys put it in? I mean, bolt it, bolt it in there?
Yeah, I think so.
I just.
Take it off.
If they go, well, if they go to, if Hutch can do it, they can haul the truck up and get the looks.
Yeah, that's a good point.
If we take that truck, it'll be left to go on the back of Marshall's truck. It doesn't roll. It's locked out. That's why, that's why we had to take it up that way to start with. Snapped a pinion off in it.
I mean, now I can put it, I can put it on the truck and put it on trailer floor.
I guess it doesn't matter to me yet whether you show Lawrence where you find that rear end. If anybody in, or take it somewhere and get it fixed somewhere else.
I think we need to have some motion somewhere. I'm tired of looking at it sitting there.
Yeah, I mean, it needs to be fixed and everybody's busy here.
I can call Hutch tomorrow and see if they can get you in. Because we should be getting the parts for the bus this week, first of next week it should be done. And then maybe we can just load it up and exchange them out.
I don't have a lot of time to chase this week. I'm trying to get that wire pulled in down there before, while it's still warm. And I've got borrowed dollies to do it, so. But, you know, next week I can say, if you can find something, that'd be wonderful. So. Other than that, we're just hanging wire, working in the alley. We've been helping Jason a little bit. He's been helping us. And we got the, we got the pipe back together at the, at the, at the power plant. We got a little concrete. We need a little excavator help on, I think, to get it out. But other than that, I want. Like I said, Midstates will be here Monday and they're gonna wanna put some conduit in, so.
Yeah, you'll have it on your registration.
Over, also.
Yeah.
I can't believe that stretch that, it's just gotta be cracked.
Well, that's what I thought.
You're not gonna stretch cast? It's broke or it's.
It's either broke or it's not broke.
Yeah, it's broke or it's fine. That comes in from the back.
Yeah.
It's not, that's not a whole set.
Ah, it comes in from the back. Because it snapped a pinion off in the front, in front of the housing.
But also you might be able to jerk on that backwards and that might come free. So you gotta get that, spit it back forward. Go pull on that backwards and that might come free to, to just roll.
It'll roll well and that is, I mean, it will roll backwards.
It'll roll backwards.
It will not go forward.
Right, okay, there you go.
Yeah, it'll roll backwards.
Anybody have any other questions for Jeff? Water department, Jason?
Well, I was just gonna tell you the sewer guys, they're, they're doing pretty good and working right along. And then while we're on the water subject, before I, before you guys let me go, I didn't know if you were gonna bring that well up south with a water load out well. If you do, I wanna hear, I wanna, I'd like to be here to hear that. I didn't know if you were gonna talk to him about it, about we got.
The whole Waterdale?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if you don't, did you wanna, did you wanna say, or talk to him about it or do you?
I don't have anything to say or that it's running and we need to figure out.
Right, that's, I didn't know if you told him that.
It, it's running and it's pumping.
Yeah, he hooked it up and.
Yeah, right.
It's nice and quiet and.
Yeah, sounds good.
It's just as quiet as I can be.
Probably pumping three hundred, maybe a little more a minute, I suppose.
Yeah.
It did, but.
Yeah. So basically, I guess if you wanna use that motor as well, you know, it needs to be piped outside of the.
Right. Have to pick it up and turn, turn the head to the, to the north.
I would just recommend that, you know, like a key switch, WFD, variable speed, start it up, no valves on it. But, you know, like a pressure relief where it kills it if it gets too high a pressure, you know, somebody else has it out on. I think that's what you were thinking right then.
We can come right off the head of it and then put a six inch meter. And then we can go right there and, or take two and a half right out the side of the wall. Because you won't need a, you won't need a, you'll need a check, but you won't need the air relief and all that on there. Because it just doesn't, if it, if the air comes out, it's just gonna go right in the truck anyway.
So is it gonna strictly be like a non-side load out, not like a?
Oh, yeah, that's what we were figuring, that would, that would work better.
What's typically, what's everybody use though, three inch? Go from six down to three. I mean, I know if you got any water truck, tank, oil bill trucks, they're all three inch.
Right.
And I'm sure the county's probably three inch with their tanker. I'm assuming your tanker's probably three inch.
Go three, yeah? I just thought it was two and a half.
Yeah, six.
With the quick connect, whatever you need to.
That's what I always thought they were.
I don't.
So we're just, you're just gonna buy a set of straightening, like a set of flange straightening veins and then just put a six inch meter in there?
I got two sets of the, the flanges and then we can sit there for, for, past that. But I figured we could sit there and hook the meter right up to the head and come right off of it. And then the check or, or the check and then the meter, it doesn't, you know, I think on the well it was the check and then the meter, I think. And then we could just reduce it right down from after that, three inch and go right out the wall.
I think there's some rules on how many foot you have, how many feet you have to have with, you know, restrictions either way.
Yeah, well, it's just gonna go off the wells when we get, that's what I was gonna do. Just go off, measure everything off the well.
Just checking on that. But you can buy all that pre-made up, just, we might have to order it, but just buy it remade, bolt it right in. It'll be expensive. I bet that would cost a couple thousand.
The meter will cost.
I bet the meter will cost fifteen hundred, I bet the straightening veins will cost the same. I bet you can't buy that much meter if not six thousand.
The six inch.
It'll be six, six thousand dollars.
Oh, no kidding?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So do you have to buy a six inch meter?
Well, it'd be preferable if you did.
Can't you just buy a meter like an irrigation well?
I, I guess. I don't know, I priced that one and it was like five, fifty-five hundred.
The meters that we use, it would be about six thousand dollars. Now, not to say you couldn't put an irrigation meter in there.
Yeah, I don't know what they call.
As long as you could, as long as it'll tally. So you have something to report to the state.
Yeah. See why not?
I don't either.
I couldn't tell you how much that would be, but I mean, if it's.
Six inch.
As long, as long.
That or reduce it down, put a three inch meter in, it's something cheaper if you reduce it down to three inch.
Yeah, I think we need to put something similar to an irrigation system. It won't be automated, but it'll be.
They're a whole lot cheaper.
Yeah, as long as, as long as they are.
As long as we have to have it automated, just so that we can read it every year.
No, 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 you don't have to.
Just have to, just have to be able to count how many gallons been through it.
As long as Elizabeth's happy with it, we're good to go.
Yeah, as long as she's happy, everybody's happy. Matter after that, if you wanna keep it on the honor system or whether you wanna. Matter after that, if you wanna keep it on the honor system or you wanna put some kind of setup on there where you can count what people use, you know?
Yeah, like I was telling these guys, I said, by the time we get this in and then what the honor system's gonna bring back all year from there, then that gallons, that gallons on that meter will tell you just how honored it is. So you'll see what, if you will, you'll see how, you know.
I just say that it's probably more important that we track how much for the state than it is necessarily trying to spend some bunch of money trying to.
At least at this point, we can figure out how much you're losing.
You know, if you're talking a hundred gallons a year that we're not collecting money on, I don't think we're real concerned about that.
I think you're gonna see more of that.
Did you ever meter the sprinklers and the parts?
No. We have to have a permit from the state to do that.
We, we meter all of it right now, though.
Yeah, we meter it now from the city. But in order to take it out of the well, we have to permit the state in order to take it out of the well. Just like we did that well, we'll have to go turn around, set up a deal, permit for it, or if we're being forced to be able to take it out of there. So, but right now, you know, it's metering through the city one.
Jason, you got anything else for water? What about streets and parks?
Uh, well, I guess you guys heard that we, we got put a stop of milling and putting asphalt down. So we just, what we had, we scraped up left, we just piled down there and we're using it to fill potholes. And then I called Phil this morning and we're gonna start sealing Monday of the street, all of Broadway. And I was gonna, I'm gonna run out here, just right at Napa, where the sheep, that sheep are. And we're gonna go all the way out to the highway there. Because everything, it's cracking out pretty good. I just wanna get it done because it's patched and everything. And then we're gonna do, uh, south across the tracks and then Lamro, all of Lamro is gonna get done. And then we're gonna come up from Santa Fe, Third, and then if we run out, that's where we're gonna run out there. Because I was talking to Jerry at the county and we, we were kind of wondering, he says, we were talking about it and I, we decided to do next year, just do the whole square at one time. And then just do it all. Because it's all one size blocks where they're gonna have to move over, move over here, go back, one, keep, whoop, keep going straight on the other. So it's, yeah, so we're just gonna wait next year and do the whole square. And then that way, that way, because I was telling the guys today, it'd keep, it'd be a little bit easier so that we would have to get the, the painting out, to paint the, the lines just on one side of the block. That way we could get everything going and then just do the whole thing at once. So I said, yeah, I told Jerry, that sounds like a good idea too. So, and that's where we're going with that.
So you're doing all of Broadway, Napa to two eighty-one, all of Lamro, Santa Fe to Third. What was the other one to the railroad track?
Just south of railroad tracks on Broadway.
Oh, okay.
To Lamro.
Gotcha. I, and it started Monday. I will try to get out of PSA.
Don't park in the street?
Well, don't park in the street and here's construction.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Mess up people's routes and it's difficult.
Let us know how that works, please.
Well, try to be informative, we'll let them know.
Anything else, Jason?
I think that's about it. We got the grade and stuff like that today.
The, on the, back to the sewer stuff, but those extra reels or the reels that are from the sewer lining guys that are sitting on the, is that just excess?
That's just, they made it too long, yeah, excess.
Okay. Is there some of those that have a lot on them or is that just me estimating from the street?
Well, it looks like there's some that's quite a bit on there, but.
I think we should talk to Austin about that when we get it done. Some of that, we're paying for all that and there's some of those that have, I mean, it looks like a hundred feet on there.
The way he was talking about, they're just charging us from the line, the manhole to manhole.
And I know, I just wanna talk to him. I mean, I'm all for having ten or fifteen extra feet, but I mean, there's some of those that look.
Right. I think it's kinda like Brian, I mean, when he, when he sells wire, he just does it by the foot and he has a big old drawer, you know? I don't think they're just gonna unroll what they're gonna use here. That's what I was thinking, because I was about the same thing.
But see, that's all, that's all.
It should be all pre-measured.
Pre-measured and ready for us.
I just wanna talk to him about it. I, I don't think it's a problem. I just, I just wanna, I wanna make sure we talk to him about that before he leaves. Somebody get the rundown on that.
I can find that.
Do you have to talk to him?
Yeah.
When are they looking at being done, did they say?
They didn't say, because they're, they, they had to. They didn't say, because they're, they, they had to go to another job, an emergency thing and then, so I, I just figured when they're done, you know, they'll let us know. But it's working pretty good. It's amazing how that works, it really is. If you guys haven't seen it, you need to see it.
Yeah, I've been looking it up online.
Anything else for Jason? The police department chief.
Uh, Michael's going to the academy in three years and they go on until then January. So pretty soon he's just gonna be...
Yes, I believe so.
Mayor's been filling in.
Well, we have to do his best to get to here, so I just kinda want to work with that one.
It's on the way.
Any questions for chief Perez? Fire chief?
I don't have anything.
City administrator?
Um, I got a call from Mike's Auto where we took the bus last week and he was able to tell me that the compressor out of the air conditioner is bad and he is gonna order a new one and he believes that should fix it. He put in the freon and the dye and thought it was gonna hold it, but it ended up leaking out and they traced it back. So he's gonna have to do the compressor and a couple other things where he can get it done. And I think he said it was gonna be one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to get that done, so. Tripping under my spending limit and I told him that it needs to have to go ahead and get it done.
That's not a bad price.
No, especially for what we've spent on it to not get it completely fixed, I was pretty...
The department too.
Yeah, well, I was just glad we finally found someone to actually look at it again, so. And then maybe we'll be able to do Jeff's truck as well, so. That's really it. My daughter's sick, her daycare's sick, so I'll probably be in and out all week trying to get traps to take a couple days off. Hand, foot and mouth.
Any questions for Jamie? Any questions for John? Old businesses, or anything anybody would like to discuss there?
Truck parking, heard anything from the rest of the city?
Oh, I kind of laid off of him cause I knew he was going through some stuff and then it's, there's just been a lot going on, so. I was just gonna kinda give him a little bit of time and then reach back out to him and I'll find out what, I mean, I think he said we just need permission from the township board, so I'll find out whether it's going to be, trying to attend that to see if we can get a plan to move forward.
Do you need permission?
Like he wants, yeah, well...
For his town?
Yeah.
Ohio township.
Um, one other thing, I forgot that it wasn't on old business, the pool, I think, might have a leak in the south wall. Stephanie had sent me, we had a land bank meeting last week.
Last Tuesday?
And she sent me a picture and there was quite a bit of water, so I had Dave go double check everything. And then I took a look at it the next day and something's going on. I talked to Jason about it, basically to figure it out, we're gonna have to...
What it looks like it's doing, the sidewalk is up on top of the intermediate pool. And then it has a sidewalk that thick and then the, the stem wall's down by the fence. Well, it's leaking right along that hole, crack and nothing on top, but just running down that side stem wall. So we're thinking that it might be the, the, where the dip basket is and the, the return might be cracked right there or something and then it's just going out in that sand underneath that sign.
That's what you said.
No, I see.
Hopefully it's right there, it could be...
Well, it makes me kind of nervous, not that I know anything about it, but with